Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I don't know about the Board, but that saying the Pledge of Allegiance means a little bit more in the situation we're in right now. That's, I'll be thankful that we're in the greatest country in the world because we will get through the COVID-19 situation, although I gotta say, um, the Board is not spring chickens, but I've never seen anything like this where as you try to make decisions and gather intel to make decisions, two minutes later, the intel changes. It's different, very different. But, uh, the reason I called this special Board meeting tonight, and for anybody watching at home, um, the reason why it is closed to the public is that in one of the recent press releases or whatever, that I think it was Charlie was the Governor Cuomo who said that open meeting laws can be adapted during this time.
Correct, under his emergency, uh, his emergency proclamation, yes, proclamation of state of emergency, that's correct.
But within the close to the public, we also live stream it, which we're doing right now, but also we are going to, uh, take this and put it out on the website and various social media platforms for the public to see. Um, to say that the last four days, I have been in meetings and on phone calls almost by the hour, on the hour, and that included Saturdays and Sundays with various, uh, well, federal, state, county officials, certainly town department heads, as we have gathered to try to come up with what is the best strategy for the town of Webster, understanding that we, uh, in a lot of ways have to defer at times to higher authorities. Um, if the county and/or the state and/or federal, uh, mandates something, for the most part, I think that we have to adhere to that. Um, but there has been a lot of things that have been left to a town's discretion. And, uh, one of the things that I've been very consistent in, I think, um, since I started meeting with the various department heads, is that I really did not want the town and the government of the town to make decisions on our facilities and also with our personnel and our citizens that would add to any potential hysteria. And as, uh, my, my good friend Matt, who runs Webster EMS, said to us today at the meeting, some of the calls that you are taking lately are more mental health anxiety. This is what happens when you have situations like this. The fear of the unknown is going to rule the day, and I don't want to add to the anxiety of that fear of the unknown. And I personally believe that there is some semblance of normalcy of keeping the facilities open where we can, um, that will minimize some of the hysteria that we can't eliminate it because we, we cannot control the fact that our citizens and our department heads obviously don't have their heads in a hole, and they are seeing social media, they're seeing the news and seeing other things that can, obviously, uh, different personalities are seeing this differently. How much it will either scare them, or on the other end of the spectrum, people that I've talked to that are like, this is a big hoax. Um, it is really interesting, the different perspectives you get. But with that being said, um, where I've been consistent in that, I've also said that, you know, we have to get educated, we're gonna deal in facts. Patty, what was, uh, Dr. Mendoza said, uh, from the Monroe County Health Commission?
Something to live within facts, not fiction. It's paraphrasing, but.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, and Patty, uh, our Deputy Supervisor, uh, who is also our pseudo surgeon general for the town of Webster, she doesn't like that.
No, I'm not.
But Patty has a daughter who is an infectious disease physician in Denver. So I will personally tell everybody that I have been leaning on Patty for a lot of news because Patty's news or facts and details about COVID-19 are coming from her daughter, a Georgetown in Kentucky.
Oh, she'd have a fit that you're doing this right now.
Well, you know what? She's in Denver.
Yeah, I'm glad she can't say this.
There you go. Now, with all that being said, and, uh, at this point now, we have three facilities actually that are in some semblance of shutdown to the public. Um, the library, um, was, I think mandated by various state and county agencies who have said that public libraries for the time being will be closed to the public. Um, Terry Bennett, who, uh, is our department head of the library, I think is doing a wonderful job of trying to keep services open for the community, uh, to the best of her ability. Some of the things like digital books, uh, where you can rent, not rent, but take out a book online to your Kindle, uh, still can be done without going into the library, can be done online. Um, they've done some drop-offs outside the library for books and pickups, sorry. You know, ingenuity, uh, and I like that, obviously, because we wanna keep doing services for the public, uh, but do it in such a way that we're meeting state, federal, county mandates, um, and keeping the citizens safe and keeping our employees safe. Um, Governor Cuomo today, uh, came out and, uh, can't believe he did this the day before my national holiday, St. Patrick's Day, Barry, can you believe this?
I can.
You know? Um, but Governor Cuomo did issue a mandate of closing bars, restaurants, gyms. Uh, our rec center that is currently run by our Commissioner of Parks and Recs, Mark Jaeger, um, we will be closing the rec center as of, I think, is it as of five or eight tonight or eight o'clock. Um, our rec center, previous to that, we had made some, I think, very common sense moves the last few days to suspend, uh, senior programs. A lot of senior citizens go there for programs, and obviously I don't have to tell everybody here that some of the more exposed, if that's the right term, people to COVID-19 are people that have respiratory problems and have compromised immune systems, and that tends to follow with age. Um, Judge DeSalvo, uh, I don't know how to describe what we have with the court system. Early this morning, you were told that there was a shutdown of the courts for a foreseeable future, two to six weeks, whatever it was, but we're not positive right now that the agency that has mandated that really has the authority to do that?
Um, yeah.
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, because, uh, I don't know how much the Board is aware of this, uh, but you're about to become aware.
Essentially, all the courts are closed all throughout the state through April 30th, civil and criminal. Um, it's my understanding that any arraignments are gonna take place by a county court judge on an emergency basis, apparently, until further notice. Uh, so, uh, our court is completely closed down in terms of any public, uh, court dockets whatsoever, for a criminal, civil, landlord, tenant, everything's closed down. Uh, the other issue, they received a memo indicating that, that all judges and all court employees are quote, "not to report to their respective courts," period. That includes us. Uh, I guess I raised the issue as to whether or not the state had authority to tell a town court clerk, who's a town employee, that they can't come to the building. Uh, but apparently, that, that is the order. Um, I certainly, as a judge, am subject to the chief judge's instructions. So it's my intention at this point to tell the clerks not to, not to come to court. I, I don't know what else to, to do. I really can't, I'm not in a position to defy the, the chief judge's direction on this particular issue. I, I assume that, um, there may be some further clarification. I know, uh, the town attorney, Charlie Genesi, was trying to get ahold of the Association of Towns and see what their position is, but apparently, he hasn't heard back from them. Uh, my thought was initially, I had no problem with closing down all our court proceedings, but it was my hope that the clerks would be able to come to court and simply do court work, even if they were not going to deal with the public in any way, you know, not take any, uh, any fines or deal with any, uh, individuals other than via telephone or, or email. But that's certainly not the directive of, of the court, and I provided a copy to, uh, to the town attorney of that directive, so. Absence some directive from the court system, I'm gonna be emailing my clerks not to come tomorrow morning. I, I don't know, I don't know what else to do.
And they certainly have plenty of work to do.
They certainly have plenty of administrative work to keep them busy.
Right.
With filing, with all the different computer input responsibilities, that they have bookkeeping, there's a, there's a ton of things that they could do, simply being in the office from 8:30 to 4:30.
And, and absent them doing that, I can't imagine what that's gonna look like when they return to work on April 30th.
I can't imagine either. I can't imagine, we had no warning for this whatsoever.
Well, and it's. What happens if you don't pay this directive?
Well, I'm subject to discipline, um, by the court system. I could be referred to the Judicial Conduct Commission, I have to follow those, I'm bound to follow those rules.
Those clerks are on, those clerks are on town payroll.
Yes, they are.
So the town could decree that they come to work and not affect the judge system at all because you didn't tell them to come to work.
That's, that's correct. Matter of fact, I'm gonna tell them not to come to work based on that directive. If the town tells them to come to work, that's another issue. I mean, I, I don't know what else, I, I'm between a rock and a hard place, I really don't know what to do.
Well, and that's, and Bill, I'm glad that you, you just, you segued perfectly over for one of the reasons for this special Board meeting is when you brought this up this morning, Tom, um, and you used a colloquialism of, "I'm not gonna die on that hill," I think you said. And I appreciated the fact that, you know, you, you're looking at, you don't wanna get in trouble for doing something that could affect your career, uh, long-term. Now, what Bill just brought up is something that I, I even said to you, I said, "I, I don't mind dying on that hill," uh, from a standpoint, but I don't know if myself or the Board saying, "No, we're going to mandate that they come into the office and supersede or overrule that, uh, ruling by whatever agency in the, the..." Does that take you off the hook, in your opinion, or is that something you still need to research?
Well, I, like I said, then it's up to the clerks if they appear. I mean, I'm telling them, I have to tell them not to come, that's what I'm directing to do.
I've jumped in a little because I, I talked to, I did talk to the, I guess, Secretary slash Law Clerk of the, of Justice Doran, who was the supervising Ju-, Supreme Court Justice of the entire.
Seventh judicial district.
Seventh judicial district, so that's eight counties going all the way to the Pennsylvania border. Uh, she had, I won't name her, but she happens to be a town justice herself.
That's correct.
And I put the question to her, and she confirmed that, yes, the town, the, the clerks of the court, the town court in Webster are town employees. They are not employees of the Office of Court Administration, and they would not necessarily be subject to the, uh, authority of the court system. But she could not answer, that's all she could say, she said, "That's all I know," and she could not go any further and say, "Yes, they can come to work."
She didn't give a definitive answer if you could direct them to come to work, if the town could direct them.
I don't wanna put anybody into an uncomfortable situation or something that ultimately is illegal or against whatever, but with that being said, um, something that might help the Board if we decide to say, "Hey, we're saying that they're town employees and they're allowed to come to work," because I understand through this whole thing, mandating someone come to work, this is a real sticky situation because.
Letting it be their choice.
Letting it be their choice, and that I think is key, but something everybody should know here, and unfortunately Steve Peace is not here, but our IT Director has been working around the clock, uh, for the last probably four or five days, to put us in a position as a town to function if we have to move remote from the town offices. And to give you some, uh, aspects of that, uh, one, the computer systems that we have that right now or heretofore were always synced to only be accessed from inside the building, Steve has been able to get it into the cloud and have it such that certain, uh, both essential and non-essential, uh, functions can be done remote. Now, remote, uh, it could be another building, another facility that Webster Town has, or it could be their home. Now, we also, and this is very interesting, you can't make this stuff up, Steve said that our phone system here, if we had a certain amount of what are called VoIPs over internet, VoIP phones, if anybody's ever heard of that, that's the acronym. He said, "Boy, we got a Mitel system here, if we had these VoIP phones that you basically can go and plug into the internet and you're, you're at your phone extension." But he goes, you know, "Go in to buy those," and I said, "Steve, you're not gonna believe this, I have thirty of them in my house." Thirty! So he was incredulous, like, "Uh, you know, you probably don't know what a VoIP phone is." I do know what a VoIP phone is, and I'm gonna bring one into him tomorrow morning, and if it is a 5,000 or 6,000 series, whatever, he is gonna be able to program those for our remote people where they can go home, plug in the phone, and basically it's like they're at the office. So we're trying to get foundationally where computer and phone, which is almost essentially an office, but there's one other thing we're trying to figure out, and it might fall into your department, uh, Tom, with the clerks, it certainly falls into Donna's department with the assessment, is that there's a lot of paper in the town of Webster. So that's the part we're still trying to figure out, that if you have to take banker boxes of paper out of the facility, that's a problem. Now, if we have to take it out of the facility and take it to another facility that is town of Webster, I think we can figure out how to do that. It's the problem of taking it to someone's home that we have not found any way that we can do that, uh, at this point.
I mean, my suggestion would be let the clerks stay home for the next forty-eight to seventy-two hours and see if we can get a, a fine-tuning ruling. I mean, there may be some, there may be some basis in law that gives the court system authority to affect town employees, maybe because of the, I'm just guessing, the governor's emergency declaration, maybe that's part of it. Uh, but I think, uh, within the next forty-eight to seventy-two hours, I think it'd be a good idea to let the clerks close down. I mean, the, the court system downtown is absolutely closed, other than a few minor exceptions.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what, and I know, I mean, today's Monday, uh, we, we have scheduled a regular town board meeting on Thursday. Of course, that's seventy-two hours from now, a thousand things could happen in this situation, but, um, assuming we go with a similar schematic to this, where we have a, a meeting that is just closed to the public but videotaped, maybe as details arise from that, the Board would be more comfortable with, I don't know if that's a resolution about they have the option to come back in, we are overriding what the, their town employees...
Right, but I mean, in the meantime, the, the, Mr. Genesi can continue to try to get some guidance from the Association of Town, of towns, maybe there's an easier, easy answer to this problem.
That'd be nice.
But the court.
They're gonna be open.
I mean, the, the court system does, you know, answer to is, for lack of a better term, a higher authority, and they do have some sway over us.
Uh, my, that's exactly what I was thinking, Tom, was that we would, you know, let Charlie continue to try to investigate this and hope for an answer, take a break for a couple days.
Right.
Until we can make a decision with a little more foundation.
Because if I can, you know, if we can assure them, they're not gonna have any contact with the public, uh, maybe that, you know, maybe that's the answer, but in the meantime, that, as Charlie saw, it was pretty specific, that lawyers and court person, judges, I'm sorry, judges and court personnel were not to report to their respective courts.
I think this is a part of a greater effort to attempt to flatten the curve by isolating people, as many people as they can. So if we don't bring these people to work, never mind protecting them from the public, we're protecting them from each other as well, and anything that could potentially be in their household, their family, their circle of friends, I get it, but they've got a lot of work to do.
And I can tell you, without mentioning names, I know some of the clerks are very uneasy about just what Councilwoman Cataldi is referring to.
Right, and, and, but, you know, we, we still have, we still have jobs to do, there's still work that needs to be done, and if they're comfortable coming, I, I would love to be able to allow them to do that, and we need to, you know, we have need to practice all those, those common sense things they've been telling us for weeks, wash your hands, cough into your sleeve, and practice social distancing.
You know, I will, tomorrow I will try to follow it up with the court system if I could get a definitive answer, but today everything was up in, was in flux.
Well, it was sort of abrupt, wasn't it?
Very abrupt.
Most things are, right?
I don't think the memo came through until we got done with the department head meetings.
Well, I got this 10:45 a.m.
There you go, so.
Are you, 'cause this one, this memo from the Executive Chamber, well, that, that, this is different, like, oh, you got, but it's, Tom, it's almost six o'clock on Monday, what are the clerks thinking they're doing tomorrow, not coming to work?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay, um, maybe I, well, you talked to them all today?
Uh, not since, not since this morning, but I was, I was waiting till we got done with this meeting to give them any definitive word.
I got you, so you would communicate to them?
Yes.
I think his plan sounds good, we, we go a couple of days.
See where this goes, maybe they'll.
If you wanna, you let me know tomorrow if you wanna get in a conference call with them or whatever, 'cause.
I'm in the office all day tomorrow, everything's shut down, so.
Well, that's true, but just to update some of what I just said here, about, we are really trying to build, uh, a system where people could work out of their houses, because even if we say as a Board, "Hey, we're, we're willing to," you know, after Charlie looks into his stuff, and we're saying, "You know what, we're gonna pull the town employee aspect of this."
If I couldn't have the clerks in the office working.
They need a lot of come to work.
And if I couldn't have the clerks in the office working without any contact with the public, if they could work at home, that'd be the next best scenario, whether that could happen or not, I don't know, but in the short term, I think we need to tell them not to come in, at least for the next seventy-two hours until we get some sort of further ruling on this.
I, I also can't believe we're gonna be the only town questioning this and looking for.
Agreed, agreed. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to the, uh, State, to the Monroe County Magistrates Association, I'm a, I'm a trustee, but I received no word from them today, because they're all handling their respective courts today.
Well, again, interestingly, the, uh, the person I spoke to was in fact a town justice.
Yes.
In Monroe County.
Right, she works for Judge Moran.
And she, yes.
So.
Moran or Doran?
Doran, I'm sorry, Judge Doran, I'm sorry. So, okay?
We'll stay in contact.
All right.
We'll keep you posted.
We'll get through it.
It's a good segue, 'cause, like I said, we've already described how the library is closed, the rec center will be closing, uh, to the public as of, uh, eight o'clock tonight, or just the court systems goes, the other facilities of the town of Webster, uh, are patrolled, the sewer department, I don't think you get a lot of public walking in there, but.
We've, and, and the way I understood it, you've almost, it's tantamount to saying, "No public come in." Um, the highway department, Joe, you similarly did, did that too, where you put a sign out there, "Don't come in." Um.
Right. Our, you know, uh, the, the cable, uh, channel where Karen works out of, nobody comes there. It, it, let's, you know, really call on a spade a spade, the facility that is the one that I would like the Board to just have a little discussion on, but, uh, is Town Hall. Uh, Town Hall, which comprised of, uh, you know, the departments that the public comes into, including police, and, and Joe, I wanna make sure, Chief, that I understood you this morning, had you essentially cut it off from the public at the police?
No, we didn't. People come in, so, so, I, 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 I sent an officer to the office, uh, we met referring people that are people who are, um, go home from nine o'clock.
Right.
Yeah, probably know that they can't, but, it will.
Right, that's right, I might have misunderstood you, that you got the slot and you, you almost have created a barrier where it's, okay. So, I did try to go around Town Hall today to the different departments because I, I, you know, I certainly understand that they're, they're watching and they're seeing other towns that have already closed facilities to the public, and it's easy for, you know, people, it's, it's imagine them thinking, "Why aren't we doing that?" Well, as I said earlier, I, I won't be redundant. I, I wanted services remaining open in the public for some semblance of normalcy and not add to the hysteria, but it is a, it is a fast-moving, uh, situation, and I, I never said I was so rigid on that that I'm not willing to, uh, change my mind on that, and I, I think we might have reached the point, especially after today, and I'll just tell you this, I did not know today if, I assumed, and you know what happens when you assume, uh, that there would be less public coming into Town Hall, just from a common sense standpoint, that they would stay out of Town Hall. Uh, from talking at reception and the various departments who take people at the desk, that was the case, and I walked through the lobby a lot to see that and whatever, and the thing that amazed me, at least from a unstatistical standpoint, I didn't sit there and take counts and whatever, but I was surprised at how many people probably over the age of seventy came into the building, and I never had factored that in. I, I thought, "Well, good, if we have less people in there, it's whatever." The reality is, they're the ones at most risk.
They are, but they're also the ones who would come in because they've lived through all, you know, they've seen so much in their lives that they're probably, you know, they've got their, their Superman capes on and nothing is gonna happen to them and life is gonna go on.
Patty, I totally misjudged it.
But they're the exact, they're, they're the exact ones who are most vulnerable in these cases.
It's a myriad of things. I mean, uh, you know, one guy was in there, wanted information about the DMV and when that's gonna open back up and all that. Look, the reality is this, um, and I don't think we have to make a resolution on this. I, I, I think it might be time for us to close Town Hall to the public, and I say that because within what I described earlier about how Steve Peace and IT is trying to figure out how our staff can work remotely, I think the departments have also done a very good job of, of describing how they can have, uh, it's, it's almost as though the public is still coming to Town Hall, they still can get ahold of us and get things to us, there's drop boxes we have and, and things of that nature. So I think there's an opportunity to, uh, close Town Hall to the public, but do it in a messaging manner, um, that doesn't add to the hysteria.
I, I think it's a prudent, a prudent thing to do, um, we need to take an abundance of caution. Um, I, I heard a quote from someone who said, "We'll never know if we've done too much, but we will know if we haven't done enough," and I, I think that's extremely valid and rather profound. Um, any of our seniors who feel the need to come in can call first to whatever department they need to talk with, and I'm sure that our employees will guide them through whatever the process if they need to drop something off. I have no doubt that someone from the town clerk's office would walk outside, meet them in the parking lot, and pick it up from them. I, I think, you know, we may change how we do business, but I think it's a wise thing to do, not only to protect the public, but to protect our staff.
And that, even though I went around today and really had said to the department heads, "If you want me to talk to your staff," you know, at least so they understand my philosophy on this, to try to calm nerves, but, you know, their words aren't gonna work as much as them knowing that the public is not coming in there. And so, you know, I, I, like I said, I don't think we have to do a Board resolution, I just wanted to make sure that the Board was properly got a chance to, you know.
Comfortable?
Yes, yeah.
Is this by your directive?
Right.
Well, and I, and Barry, I'm gonna tell you something.
Well, Mary, I'm going to tell you something. What we put out so far, and I don't... Again, I should have talked to you, the gang, about this, is that I made a conscious decision that when Karen Buck was putting out notices, it's from the town board. It's from the five of us, sorry. I have no problems putting my name on these things, but this is a team effort from a standpoint of how we're going to go about certain aspects of this.
I just wanted to expand on, or compliment Patty for what she suggested with respect to when we do give notifications to the public, that we are here to serve the public, that it's important that we also let them know that there is something that they need, that they can call. And our department heads, I'm sure, as you said, would be more than happy to accommodate them if that would be necessary on an appointment basis. And I would point to, say, the building department. If someone has a dire need for a building permit because they're in some stage of construction, we just don't want to shut them down for a month because that delays their entire process. So we've got people out there, their houses are caught on fire, and they're in a certain stage of rebuild, and they need to have certain inspections done or they're coming in for an application. So I just, you know, I just wanted to expand on what Councilman Catali said and emphasize the fact that our department heads are very, very accommodating. But to make that announcement, maybe we should also let them know, the public know that, "Hey, we're here. If you have a need, make a phone call, and we'll be more than happy to accommodate."
I think one of the reasons I'm very comfortable with this now is that the feedback in the last three or four days from our department heads on a lot of various issues, the challenges they have at their department, if we're in the facility, the challenges if they all of a sudden had to be out of the facility. One thing that came through from their summaries is that they had a way to still service the community if all of a sudden we weren't open to the public. And that made me feel pretty good about, "Well, then we can do this and still perform services," because you're right. And John, maybe this is to what you said. I also know from a workflow standpoint, I want the town's employees to be doing the workload as we go on, because if suddenly they're not doing work for two to six weeks, well, we're going to come back here, and there is going to be a lot of backlog of work, and that's going to be a problem. It will be, you know, for a lot of reasons that will be a problem. So I'd like to avoid that and have the continuity. The one that I haven't figured out yet, or we haven't figured out, is the paper-driven departments. Certainly, as long as you can come into Town Hall and work, that's not a problem. I have no doubt, Donna, that you have made that to the inch. Before we move on, I don't know if there's anything more I can tell you, or if anybody has any questions about what I've described as hers, us trying to put together some semblance of being able to take an office that is in Town Hall or whatever facility and mimic exactly what they do at their home or in another facility. Because that's functionality. Because... Does anybody have any questions on that?
I do.
Shoot away, Jen.
So the only thing that would concern me, and I believe that Donna spoke to you about it before, is removing public records to not another facility, but to someone's personal home, which you just can't do that.
We have not found any way, unless all of a sudden the governor came out tomorrow, which, you know, and said, "Hey, caution of the wind, you can take personal records."
Yeah, you don't want to do that.
No, you could be sent to the... You don't want to do that. You never know with the...
Well, you never know, but we do know, and we still have experience with it.
Yes, we do. But I would also say that, you know, when we talked about this initially, we talked about essential, less essential personnel, and those who... It's not like... It's not like all of our staff will not have a place to work. We're going to have a facility somewhere if we have to close down a building, and that's closing down because of quarantine or whatever could happen under that. But there will be certain personnel who will still have a physical place to come in one of our facilities. It's those who are less essential, because no one is not essential, or they wouldn't be here. It's those who are less essential who wouldn't have the task of being in charge of that paperwork, and that could involve some shifting of duties to make that happen, but we would keep all of that within the facility. And certainly, we've moved boxes of paper before when we all worked in the room behind here, when Town Hall was under construction.
We had a room behind here and could handle a handful of people back there where they could be, you know, greatly separated.
Yes.
But it's available, and it's all looked up, and it's... All the electronics are back there.
So stuff won't go home, but we might be able to relocate it within our buildings.
Patty has a better memory than me. What is the term that Tim Kohlmeier used, the three things that we should consider?
What we are required to do by... Hold on, I have it right in front of me from the notes of that meeting. What we are required to do by law, charter, and contract.
Yes, and it's interesting, is you use that as your compass for when you start to discern what are essential and non-essential. And I had said at the first meeting with the department heads on Friday on this, I had to do this at my company, and I hated the process because by definition, calling something non-essential makes somebody, you know, it doesn't make them feel good about their job.
Was law what and contract?
Law, charter, and contract.
Yep, and at that meeting on Friday, I referenced that, that I hated the concept of differentiating essential and non-essential, but it's a necessary evil, especially when you get into situations like this. And I looked over at Terry Bennett, our excellent library department head, and I said, "Terry, I hope you don't take this wrong, but library is not essential. It is, you know, it is something that is so important to the community, but when you have a situation like this, those would fall into what are considered non-essential if you go by the compass of law, contract, and charter." So as we discern that, and we figure out what functions we are going to make sure we continue to do, and I want to make sure everybody understands, like I said earlier, if Terry and her staff at the library can continue doing things for the community, like online, having books taken out digitally, having the outside drop boxes, I certainly want to promote that as much as possible. But we're here, especially based on what the governor just came out today and said. And what is in writing through memos that Charlie, I hope you can help me discern what the heck this means, because not for nothing, when stuff gets done quickly in government, I don't think they think of all the tentacles attached, because there's some of this that I don't understand. And I think it's very vague, and this board is going to have to make some decisions. And with that being said, this essential and non-essential, if nobody else out here from the department heads has any questions or anything, I'm making a resolution based on personnel.
Well, okay.
To go into executive session.
Well, it's a little more personnel, but I'm going to read the wording right from the...
We're going into an executive session.
We are going into executive session.
Can I ask a question before we do that?
You sure can.
It was a question for Mark. I haven't had a chance to get in touch with you. I've heard a number of times that Monroe County determined that the number of seniors who required meals countywide was 110. I can't believe that. So have they... And then it came out in yesterday's conference call that they had not actually... They actually hadn't contacted all of the auxiliary places where seniors get lunches. Has anybody contacted you to determine that?
Yes, I had a conversation with the folks from Meals on Wheels, and they will be the ones providing food for those seniors in our program in our area.
Okay.
Now, whether they are going to do that countywide, we didn't get into that conversation. It was more... It's more concerned by the client as well, and they take care of that great theme, but they've worked out of our facility, so they're being closed. Would they be out? Their real answer to that is no, because it's... They're in and out, they drop stuff off, and I think so is going to be a late way to get the back to the elderly.
Okay, great.
But we will still be able to service that, so that they can service those folks.
So Meals on Wheels will be delivering it to the seniors?
Yes, perhaps.
Good, thank you. I just wanted some clarification on that and how it was going to work.
And hopefully that bought time for Charlie to tell me exactly what is the basis.
I think, Mr. Supervisor, what you're looking for is to go into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or persons or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or persons or corporations. Is that correct?
Well, it sounds scary, but yes.
They would be under Republic Officers' Law Section 105, Subdivision 1, Subdivision F.
Do I have to repeat that as I make this?
No, I think I just added that to the...
Thank you. Will I make a resolution to go into executive session for what Counselor Gennasi just quoted?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fortunately, we have to empty the room. Karen will stop. Yes.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for all you've been doing in the past.